I want to call to order the regular meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for November the 13th, 2023. Good to see each and every one of you here. We'd like for each of you to please stand at this time for our prayer and pledge of allegiance. We lead for our Commissioner, Jim Thompson. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. At this time, we have our roll call and determination of quorum.
Jim Averwater.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Right.
Mike Kush.
Right.
Lee Bogel.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Chip Pinion. Marvin Whitworth.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Tedis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Been determined we have a quorum. We'll move into item four, which is approval of our minutes. I believe we need to approve October 23, 2023. And I'll call on our Vice Chairman, Lee Bogel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed the minutes of the October 23rd meeting and found those to be in good order. Therefore, I make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Have a motion second. Commissioner Jim Averwater, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Minutes have been approved. Public comment period. Have we received any calls? No calls have been received. We'll move now into item six. Items withdrawn or deferred.
Yes, sir.
All right. We're moving right along into item seven. New business begins with item A submitted for final plat approval. Number one, Valley Farms, Section 4, 23, 2078. Fifty-five lots on 11.82 acres, zoned PUD, located off of Red Barn Road. Valley Farms Group LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. This first application that we're looking at, as you stated, is for a final plat for Valley Farms. This is Section 4. The preliminary plan was approved back in 2017. This plat does appear to be consistent with that original master plan. Since this subdivision does utilize sewer from Murfreesboro, they will also require Murfreesboro Planning Commission approval and not just ours. Our comments have been addressed. After looking at the revisions that were made, everything had been taken care of, so this plat is in good order. We'd recommend approval. With that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Commissioners, comments?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to any staff comments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. It is approved. Item two, Redmond Subdivision, 23, 2080, two lots on 4.36 acres, zoned RL, located along Rocky Glade Road. Kathy Lynn Redmond is the applicant, includes request for a fire hydrant waiver. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant is planning, excuse me, to split the property into two separate lots, as you can see on the, well, on the plat there before you on the screen. There's an existing house and accessory structures located already on Lot 1. Lot 2 will be a new building lot. There is not a fire hydrant currently within 1,000 feet of this property. You can see there's a distance tie there kind of toward the bottom, and Mike's kind of highlighting it there, about 4,900 feet or so to the nearest fire hydrant. They did make a request to consolidated utility district. They did, CUD then provided a letter saying that the lines in that area cannot support a hydrant. So therefore, they are asking for plat approval, but they are also asking for a waiver to the fire hydrant provision since it cannot be supported at this location. Beyond this issue, this plat is in good order, and quite frankly, if this hadn't required a waiver, we just would have approved it administratively. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Have a second. Further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. It has been approved. Item three, Hosted Subdivision, 23, 2081, three lots on 12 acres, zoned RM, located along Tiger Woods Way, just right construction is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant is planning to split this property into, oh, sorry, I forgot to move my comments over. Planning commissions considered the preliminary plan for this property back in April of this year. The reason that we're seeing this tonight, even though it's only three lots, is the fact that they are adding a cul-de-sac here. So this would count as extension of road right-of-way, those kind of things. So that automatically requires an approval from the Planning Commission. We cannot approve that administratively. There are some accessory structures on the property. Our comments, for the most part, have been addressed. You'll see there's a cell tower there. That's not really the issue we're dealing with. You'll see on the property, like I said, there's a number of accessory structures there. Some of them haven't been permitted. We've been talking with our Building Codes Department about that, and they're aware. But, and the applicant is as well. The issue we're running into is if these structures are to stay, which I believe most of them are going to, if this subdivision is recorded, if this plat is recorded, then these become accessory to nothing at that point, and our regulations do not allow for that. So the applicant is aware that if they do intend on keeping these structures before recording the plat, they will have to pursue special exception applications for those accessory structures to be there prior to the houses being built. We can work with them on that. If someone's getting ready to pull a building permit or something, they can permit everything at the same time. That'd be fine. We'll work with them. But they're aware of the issue. But beyond that, the plat's in good order, so we'd recommend approval subject to that.
Questions or comments? Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staffs. So the tower here, does there need to be a note on the, on this plat about the distance requirements from the cell tower, and is that on this plat?
Well, you can see, there's a 200, Mike's circling it right there. It's about 292 tower fall zone easement, so it's shown on the plat already. I think that's what you're asking.
But there's an indication or some way to make sure nobody builds in that, in that zone?
Correct. I think that would serve as that. Yes, sir.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, the only change from April is the cul-de-sac.
Well, no. The preliminary was presented to you in April with the cul-de-sac. The only reason it's coming before you is because that's an extension of a road or a right-of-way, so we can't approve it administratively since they're extending the road. So that's why it's coming before you. So the cul-de-sac isn't new. It was part of the preliminary plan.
So that's the only change, and staff is recommending approval?
Staff does recommend approval. Yes, sir.
Move to approve with staff recommendations?
Motion to approve. Second, Commissioner Averwater. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. It has been approved. Item four, Woodruff Co., Section 2, 23, 2082, 42 lots on 37.88 acres, zoned PUD, located off of Ruby Kate Way, Mankin Point, LLC is the applicant.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in January of 2019. Again, this is consistent with that approved plan. Most of our comments have been addressed. There is one comment that is still outstanding, and that is just the lots that do have minimum pad elevations to add a minimum floor elevation, two feet above that for consistency. But that's something we can ensure is done prior to any recording. But beyond that, this plat does appear to be in good order, and we'd recommend approval subject to that.
Commissioners?
Doug, if that's your only exception, then I'd make a motion to approve, subject to that or any other comments.
Motion to approve. Second, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. It has been approved. Item four, Woodruff Co., Section 2, 23, 2082, 42 lots on 37.88 acres, zoned PUD, located off of Ruby Kate Way, Mankin Point, LLC is the applicant.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in January of 2019. Again, this is consistent with that approved plan. Most of our comments have been addressed. There is one comment that is still outstanding, and that is just the lots that do have minimum pad elevations to add a minimum floor elevation, two feet above that for consistency. But that's something we can ensure is done prior to any recording. But beyond that, this plat does appear to be in good order, and we'd recommend approval subject to that.
Commissioners?
Doug, if that's your only exception, then I'd make a motion to approve, subject to that or any other comments.
Motion to approve. Second, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. It has been approved. Item four, Woodruff Co., Section 2, 23, 2082, 42 lots on 37.88 acres, zoned PUD, located off of Ruby Kate Way, Mankin Point, LLC is the applicant.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in January of 2019. Again, this is consistent with that approved plan. Most of our comments have been addressed. There is one comment that is still outstanding, and that is just the lots that do have minimum pad elevations to add a minimum floor elevation, two feet above that for consistency. But that's something we can ensure is done prior to any recording. But beyond that, this plat does appear to be in good order, and we'd recommend approval subject to that.
Commissioners?
Doug, if that's your only exception, then I'd make a motion to approve, subject to that or any other comments.
Motion to approve. Second, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Has been approved. We're moving now into item I down here. Let me remind you, Commissioners, you're seeing final plat approval. You're also now going into rezoning and zoning ordinances or amendments request. The reason we're doing these tonight, you will remember, we only have one meeting in November, and that's why you're seeing these different ones in here at this time at this meeting. So we're now ready for rezoning and zoning ordinances, amendment requests. All rezoning and zoning ordinance amendment requests will be considered at the December 14th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting unless deferred or withdrawn by the Planning Commission or applicant. Item one, Chris Rudd for Prop Co. 1000 LLC, REZ 23, 021, location on 1452 Mockingbird Lane. The Commissioner is out in District 4, Robert P. Jr. Size of the site is approximately 20 acres, tax map 68, parcel 40. Existing zoning is residential medium, and proposed zoning is planned unit development or PUD for residential development. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. As you stated, this applicant is looking to have a planned development approved on this property. This would be called Mockingbird Estates. This will consist of 21 single-family detached lots and 40 single-family attached townhomes on approximately 19 and 1/2 acres. This works out to a density of a little over three dwelling units per acre. The minimum lot size for the single-family detached product, I know in your staff comments it says 7,800 square feet. They've made some tweaks to the pattern book, which is correct now after the staff report went out. It's actually, the minimum's going to be 7,000 for the single-family detached with the typical lot being 7,800 square feet. House sizes, you can see, 2,400 square feet as a minimum, no greater than three bedrooms. Townhome products will range in size anywhere from 1,800 to about 2,200 square feet in living area and two bedrooms. I will point you to the pattern book, which is on your iPads for your consideration. The applicant's also present. I know he'll be making a presentation. This property is currently zoned residential medium density RM, which does require a minimum lot size of about 15,000, well, of 15,000 square feet. The maximum number of houses, if you were to do the math just from a gross dwelling unit standpoint, you'd be looking at somewhere in a neighborhood of 56. However, most of our RM developments average somewhere between 1, 1 1/2 units per acre. A more realistic figure is somewhere between, say, 20 and 30 units. Some, you might get closer to two. It just depends on how the property lays out, but just to give you an idea of what they're proposing versus what the land could do under the RM. This property is going to continue to have access to existing rights-of-way on Mockingbird through two entrances. You can see that on the concept plan right there. There is no direct access to Highway 96, Last Cassis Pike. You can see the area right around that is pretty much the step area. Information provided by the applicant in their pattern book states that Mockingbird Lane is to be improved to a 20-foot-wide paved cross-section with four-foot-wide shoulders along their frontage. You can also see that there are some stub roads, or stub road, I should say, that's been added right to where the cul-de-sac is, and then a small jet there. I guess that'd be to the north northeast is what you can see. Each single-family detached unit's going to have two-car garage and driveways to accommodate four vehicles. Townhome units will have one-car garages with driveways to accommodate the two vehicles. And access to those townhomes are going to be actually via a private alley, which is going to be behind the structures, not along the main road, as you can see right there. Mike's got it on the screen, so you can kind of see what they're showing right there. We do expect to see improvements at the intersection of Last Cassis Pike and Mockingbird Lane. There is an existing turn lane there currently, but, so there are some horizontal deficiencies right there, and I'm sure Mike will talk a little bit more about that when he makes his presentations here briefly. Buffers are not required between single-family residential zone properties. Planned developments, however, are required to set aside a minimum of 10% open space, which this particular application has provided. There are no buffers currently provided along those adjacent boundaries, and our performance standards only deal with commercial property, not residential, so those wouldn't apply in this situation. As you can see in our staff recommendation, we do have mixed feelings about this application. We've had multiple issues with smaller lot subdivisions, and we've discussed those from time to time here at the Planning Commission. Now, granted, these are not as small as some of the ones that we have approved, but they are smaller nonetheless than what would typically be allowed in this district. They're also proposing more units than what would normally be allowed in the RM, and you can see the numbers that I placed in your staff report there. Residential properties around this site are larger than what is being proposed, than what is being proposed in this development. Again, the current zoning would allow for 15,000 square foot lots. The city of Murfreesboro recently annexed property along Last Cassis Pike closer to Jarnet to the southwest, I guess, with a similar product to this, but that's about 2/3 of the mile to the south of this property. Now, I will say that this is located within our urban, our general urban character area, which does recommend densities consistent with what's being proposed. But we do think that there is, it's appropriate for denser development to be closer to municipal limits, but there's also a timing element, I think, involved in a lot of this that needs to be considered. So there's a lot of discussion, I think, that needs to be had with this application tonight. Like I said, we kind of had mixed feelings about this, but with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions. Mike, I don't know if you wanted to go into any comments right now or wait, but...
I can wait till after the consultant's presentation.
Commissioners, do you have questions for our staff? Comments?
Only comment that I'd say that I would have until I see a presentation's traffic study. We talked about traffic, traffic, traffic. Highway 96 is already backing up, and it's just something we're going to have to deal with. I mean, we are going to have to deal with how we want to handle this traffic. I've not seen an answer to that from this Planning Commission just yet.
Other questions? At this time, we'll ask for the applicant or representative to come forward. Introduce yourself and location.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm Matt Taylor of SEC, located 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard. I've also got my client, Mr. Chris Rudd, with me as well. In addition to that, we've also got the property owners here tonight as well. So if you have any questions of any of the team, we're happy to answer those questions. Most of what I was going to say, Doug, has went over, but I will reiterate a few things. Again, it is 61 total residences. That's split between 40 rear-low townhomes. I don't think we've had a lot of those, maybe not any inside the county, so we felt like this was a good opportunity to present a very nice face toward our street, where we're going to turn those garages back toward the private alleys that the HOA will be maintaining, and then present a very nice architecture out toward the street. All of our streets will have sidewalks along both sides of the streets, and that'll interconnect with our walk-in trail that goes around our detention pond and back in toward our open space. Our amenities here will consist of walk-in trail, pavilion, green, or grilling areas, as well as kind of a village green concept up along Mockingbird. We've tried to locate our large open spaces and green spaces along both Highway 96 as well as Mockingbird to keep that density and that development internal to the property. We did host a neighborhood meeting, I think it was about two months ago. I think we had about 10 to 15 people attend. Did not hear a lot of negative feedback there. Thought it was fairly well-received by the neighbors. We did conduct a traffic impact study. Since there are already turn lanes installed along Highway 96, there weren't any identified improvements, but working with staff, we did, we know that Mockingbird's steep as it comes up to Highway 96. We're going to raise that and flatten that out, so it's a safe approach. And then we know that there's, the curves as you come down Mockingbird are less than desirable, and so that one curve that we control, we're going to soften that by kind of flattening out that curve a little bit. We don't control the other side of the road, so we can't take care of both of those, but we are going to take care of our side with this project. And then we felt like, as Mr. Demossi said, that it does comply with that comprehensive plan, the densities and thought concept, because we are closer to city limits. We are along major arterial. We do have good access to water and able to provide a step system. So outside of that, I think the pattern book, it has example elevations of both the townhomes as well as the detached homes. So outside of that, I'm happy to answer any questions. My client is here, again, if you have questions of them as well.
Is this underground utilities throughout this neighborhood or above ground?
Anything that we have on site will be all underground.
I have a question. It says it has a one-car garage rear entrance. With properties this size, we know it's over 70% is going to be used as storage, and the driveways hold two cars. Where do the other cars go?
We've allotted for visitor spaces around the townhomes. We've distributed that throughout that area specifically for that reason, in case you've got more than one, two cars or three cars, or you've got guests over for a birthday party or something like that. And all of this is, it's a relatively small development overall, as Doug said. It's just under 20 acres in size, so it's all very walkable. So all of those parking spaces are very easily accessible by any of the townhome residents there, and really for the detached as well.
I see that on one side, but I don't see the visitor parking or overflow parking on the other side, on the top, I guess, Last Cassis Pike side.
So along, on the Last Cassis Pike side, visitor spaces are located between Unit 5 and 6. You'll see those, and then again between 20 and 21. Who's kind of took a different approach? One of them's on the opposite side of the alley, the other's in between.
Matt, it looks like there are 40 townhomes there, which looks a lot like apartments. The HOA will have restrictions relating to rentals so that they won't be apartments?
Yes, sir. And we could put that in the book. I don't think that language is in there, but we can, we've got some language where we're not going to sell to a rental community. So that's not what we're wanting. We're wanting these to be sold. We want these to be sold to individuals.
This company, Prop Co., I've not seen them before. Where are they from?
So Mr. Rudd had a separate development entity. I don't remember his entity name at the time, but he's actually sold to Toll Brothers. Toll Brothers is a national builder that came to town about three years ago. They deemed themselves kind of America's luxury home builder. What Chris had in the pipeline fit very well with what they did, and so he had a period of time where he couldn't necessarily do development like this, and he was still engaged under their services. Since that time, I think those non-competes and that, him being part of that company are past, and so he's kind of starting afresh. He's done development for many years, and he can come up and speak to it, kind of his resume, if you'd like to hear that. Commissioner Phillips, he can certainly speak to that better than I can.
Other questions, Commissioners?
Something about a turn lane on 96. I'm a little confused on where exactly this is on 96, but, you know, we hear about traffic and traffic and more traffic, as he said, Jim said. So, you know, how busy is Mockingbird Lane or a turning lane? And then how are they going to get into the traffic on Last Cassis Pike?
So Mockingbird was relatively mild. That's why with the traffic study, the numbers were not high enough to warrant any additional improvements that are there. And so the things that we talked to staff about were like that elevation. You can see how it kind of ramps up pretty quick right there at the end, and so we want to flatten that out so you have a better approach as you come from the south toward Highway 96. And as far as getting into the traffic, you know, you're going to have to wait your turn, for lack of a better term. There is going to be some queuing there, but the analysis inside the traffic impact study did not identify an excessive queuing on side of, on Mockingbird, nothing that would warrant additional laneage or signals. All that was evaluated. And the good thing about Mockingbird is you can go to the south and go toward Compton or, is that Emery? I think that wants to run between Compton and back around to Last Cassis and get you back to Osborne if you need to get to Memorial. So you do have multiple options on this side of Highway 96, whereas the other side, you're kind of trapped. You've got to go to Highway 96 on the other side. Allows for much better distribution of trips in the morning or the evenings.
Matt, I always greatly appreciate the quality of your work. When I look at this one, though, I see maybe you'll hit some first-time home buyers, but I'm betting that you're going to have a lot of investors and turn this neighborhood into rental property pretty quickly. And from my observations of high-density townhomes with single-car garages especially is, of course, the garage becomes storage. It's a small unit, and they just can't put all their stuff. All of us have that problem. And many of those people bring home work vehicles. It's a working-class market, and so they get into the guest parking, and we have 27 parking places. It doesn't leave, I don't even see enough parking places with that for the residents, much less a guest. So it makes me a little uncomfortable because these people are going to have to park on the street, and we're trying to stay away from that for fire accidents, emergency vehicles, and for the sake of the people that are living in the back of the neighborhood. Convince me my thinking is wrong here.
Well, I won't ever try to tell you that you're wrong, Commissioner. You know, I think that we've been able to, in previous instances, enforce some restrictions on the garages of not being used toward storage so that they have to be used toward cars to try to address that. You know, I think we're probably happy to add some more visitor spaces if you think that there's a number that works out there. You know, one thing that we have looked at in the past is kind of a 1.1 space per bedroom. Some quick math, looks like we could apply with that. A 1.1 is supposed to cover the visitors as well, but we can certainly look at adding some more spaces if you kind of had a number in mind. I don't, everywhere's a little different. Every community's going to be a little bit different, I think. Commissioner Averwater? But we do have space where we could add some more visitor spaces, and we would not be opposed to that.
Thank you, Chairman. Jim, let me, and Matt, I'll give you my personal experience. I live in Three Rivers subdivision, which is a monster version of this site right here that Matt's proposing. His Street A for me would be Casey Lane. The front part of Three Rivers is exactly what he has proposed, and those are townhouses with the rear alley loading. The red detached is exactly like a mini version of Three Rivers, where you have detached homes all along Casey Lane and then streets off of Casey Lane where I live. And the parking, and mine was built 15 years ago before they even thought about putting extra parking places for visitors. So imagine those, all those townhouses without the extra parking is what I have at Three Rivers. But I'm telling you, it looks really good in my area because the HOA strictly enforces the parking on the street situation and on the back. There are signs posted, you know, every block about do not park in the street or you'll be towed, and that works. It's enforced, and you drive down Casey, and there's never a car parked on the side. You drive in the back on the rear low...
....................................................................................................................................
Neighborhood or above ground?
Anything that we have on site will be all underground.
Question, it says it has a one car garage rear entrance with properties this size. We know it's over seventy percent is going to be used as storage. And the driveways hold two cars. Where do the other cars go?
We've allotted for visitor spaces around the townhomes. We've distributed that throughout that area specifically for that reason. In case you've got more than one, two cars, or three cars, or you've got guests over for a birthday party or something like that. And all of this is, it's a relatively small development overall, as Doug said. It's just under twenty acres in size, so it's all very walkable. So all of those parking spaces are very easily accessible by any of the townhome residents there. And really for the detached as well.
I see that on one side, but I don't see the visitor parking or overflow parking on the other side, on the top.
So...
Last Cassis Pike side.
Yes, so along, on the Last Cassis Pike side, visitor spaces are located between Unit Five and Six. You'll see those. And then again, between Twenty and Twenty-One. Who's kind of took a different approach? One of them's on the opposite side of the alley, the other's in between.
Matt, it looks like there are forty townhomes there, which looks a lot like apartments. The HOA will have restrictions relating to rentals, so that they won't be apartments.
Yes, sir. And we can put that in the book. I don't think that language is in there, but we can, we've got some language where we're not going to sell to a rental community. So that's not what we're wanting. We're wanting these to be sold. We want these to be sold to individuals.
This company, Prop Co., I've not seen them before. Where are they from?
So Mr. Rudd had a separate development entity. I don't remember his entity name at the time, but he actually sold to Toll Brothers. Toll Brothers is a national builder that came to town about three years ago. They deemed themselves kind of America's luxury home builder. Chris, what Chris had in the pipeline fit very well with what they did. And so he had a period of time where he couldn't necessarily do development like this, and he was still engaged under their services. Since that time, I think those non-competes and that, him being part of that company are passed, and so he's kind of starting afresh. He's done development for many years, and he can come up and speak to it, kind of his resume, if you'd like to hear that, Commissioner Phillips. He can certainly speak to that better than I can.
Other questions, Commissioners?
Something about a turn lane on Ninety-Six? I'm a little confused on where exactly this is on Ninety-Six, but I, you know, we hear about traffic and traffic and more traffic, as he said. So, you know, how busy is Mockingbird Lane or Turning Lane? And then how are they going to get into the traffic on Last Cassis Pike?
So, Mockingbird was relatively mild. That's why with the traffic study, the numbers were not high enough to warrant any additional improvements that are there. And so the things that we talked to staff about were like that elevation. You can see how it kind of ramps up pretty quick right there at the end. And so we want to flatten that out, so you have a better approach as you come from the south toward Highway Ninety-Six. And as far as getting into the traffic, you know, you're going to have to wait your turn, for lack of a better term. There is going to be some queuing there, but the analysis inside of the traffic impact study did not identify an excessive queuing on side of, on Mockingbird. Nothing that would warrant additional laneage or signals. All that was evaluated. And the good thing about Mockingbird is you can go to the south and go toward Compton or, is that Emery? I think that wants to run between Compton and back around to Last Cassis and get you back to Osborne if you need to get to Memorial. So you do have multiple options on this side of Highway Ninety-Six. Whereas the other side, you're kind of trapped. You've got to go to Highway Ninety-Six on the other side. Allows for much better distribution of trips in the morning or the evenings.
Matt, I always greatly appreciate your, the quality of your work. When I look at this one, though, I see maybe you'll hit some first-time home buyers, but I'm betting that you're going to have a lot of investors and turn this neighborhood into rental property pretty quickly. And from my observations of high-density townhomes with single-car garages especially is, of course, the garage becomes storage. It's a small unit, and they just can't put all their stuff. All of us have that problem. And many of those people bring home work vehicles. It's a working-class market. And so they get into the guest parking, and we have twenty-seven parking places. It doesn't leave my mind. I don't even see enough parking places with that for the residents, much less a guest. So it makes me a little uncomfortable, because these people are going to have to park on the street. And we're trying to stay away from that for fire accidents, emergency vehicles, and for the sake of the people that are living in the back of the neighborhood. Convince me my thinking is wrong here.
Well, I won't ever try to tell you that you're wrong, Commissioner. You know, I think that we've been able to, in previous instances, enforce some restrictions on the garages of not being used towards storage, so that they can't have to be used toward cars to try to address that. You know, I think we're probably happy to add some more visitor spaces if you think that there's a number that works out there. You know, one thing that we have looked at in the past is kind of a 1.1 space per bedroom. Some quick math, looks like we could apply with that. At 1.1, supposed to cover the visitors as well. But we can certainly look at adding some more spaces if you kind of had a number in mind. I don't, everywhere's a little different. Every community's going to be a little bit different, I think, Commissioner Everwater. But we do have space where we could add some more visitor spaces, and we would not be opposed to that.
Thank you, Chairman. Jim, let me, and Matt, I'll give you my personal experience. I live in Three Rivers subdivision, which is a monster version of this site right here that Matt's proposing. My, his Street A, for me, would be Casey Lane. The front part of Three Rivers is exactly what he has proposed, and those are townhouses with the rear alley loading. The red detached is exactly like a mini version of Three Rivers, where you have detached homes all along Casey Lane and then streets off of Casey Lane where I live. And the parking, and mine was built fifteen years ago, before they even thought about putting extra parking places for visitors. So imagine those, all those townhouses without the extra parking is what I have at Three Rivers. But I'm telling you, it looks really good in my area, because the HOA strictly enforces the parking on the street situation and on the back. There are signs posted, you know, every block about do not park in the street or you'll be towed, and that works. It's enforced, and you drive down Casey, and there's never a car parked on the side. You drive in the back on the rear loaded, and trust me, I have a two-car garage, and I've never had a car in it in five years, because I've got six kayaks in there. I've got all my stuff, all my cars are in the driveway. And nobody parks in the circles. Nobody parks on the streets, because they're of fear of being towed. So it's all a matter of how your HOA is set up and the strength of your HOA. So I understand your concern, and as a resident in a giant version of this, I'm very cognizant about driving down and seeing places where it doesn't work, and all you see are cars down the parking lot. That is the ugliest thing to me that I can ever stomach. But it's all about your HOA. So if we can get, if we can get a guaranteed verbiage in an HOA, I'm comfortable with the parking situation. So that's just my personal reference that I can share with you.
Other questions, Commissioners? If not, thank you, sir. We'll move now into our comment period. Individuals who would like to express concerns or if they're for this or whatever, we'll do that at this time. Just to remind you, you'll have three minutes to make your comments, and I will open the session up now for public comments. Anyone like to come forward at this time, we'll ask that you do so. Give us your name and your address, please, for the records. Come right here to the mic, please.
I'm Jack Gritten. I was at at 2603 Charter Court in Murfreesboro, and I'm here to represent the family that owns the property that's selling the property. The family is my family. The property is currently owned by my sisters-in-law, Betty Lane, Amy Hickman, and my wife, Judy Gritten. This is property that they inherited from their mother. Their mother was born on this property. She grew up on this property. She raised her family on this property, and she lived her life on this property. At her death, she's two hundred yards away and buried at Hillview Baptist Church, where each of her three daughters and their husbands will be buried. Ladies will continue to own property across Mockingbird Lane and on Last Cassis Pike. They are dedicated to being respectful of this family property. It's a multi-generational property. They believe that the proposal that Mr. Rudd has made is a good proposal for this property. And they had just asked me if I would stand up and speak and tell you that as continuing landowners and as generational landowners of this particular property, they're pleased with what's been offered. And that's all that I would offer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Evening, Commissioner P.
Robert P., Commissioner in the Fourth District, Level 4047, Bivens Hill Road in Redville, Tennessee. And it didn't all get blowed away, as Ms. Yuri P. down there can tell you. I have met with this family, and I think you got a good synopsis of what's going on from the gentleman that just spoke for the family. I know one of their family members lives in the large green space on the Murfreesboro side of that. I've spoke with him directly. He was actually offered for sale, you know, being family, and he's okay with that, you know. He's like all the rest of us here at Rutherford County. He's been here a while. You know, we kind of grit our teeth with the growth, but we know that that's going to happen. A lot of it's our children. But I have not had the first call from any of my constituents about this area. I went and talked to Edward on my own, and I've talked to the family here. My concern, the same thing that I've heard y'all voice, is traffic. And I told them, as long as we have turn lanes put in here, and I don't have a problem from the citizens in that area against it, then I'll support them, and that's what I plan to do. I think that they've looked at this, and they've tried to come up with a good solution, and I think it is. You know, you got, what, one hundred and sixty-eight? How many? I forget total acres there, but if you divided that out, you could get several houses out of it, you know. Standing the drip fields, you wouldn't get near as much of that yield there. But I personally am glad to see the density, you know, people that want to live like that. Hey, knock yourself out. Me, I'm going to be as far away from people as I can be. But, you know, there's a call for people that like to live like that, people that like to live where there's streetlights. Me, I don't want to see one, but there's a lot of people that don't want to be anywhere that there's not one. And I think this fits for a lot of people, and I would suggest that you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to make a comment? I see no one coming forward. I'll close the comment period. Commissioners or anyone from the staff need to make any other comment? Give it to the Commissioners then. It's up to you. I'll entertain further comments, questions, or we'll accept a motion at this time.
One, maybe kind of a, maybe a legal question. I'm not sure. We rarely get into discussions on HOAs, but I think Commissioner Kush mentioned if we could have some language put in the HOA bylaws that related to street parking, those kind of things. Is that possible from a legal perspective? Could that be a condition?
Have the applicant say what they're going to do. Is that okay?
Matt Taylor again of SEC. Commissioner Phillips, we've actually already made that commitment. I was looking back in the book on Sheet Nine of the Pattern Book about the eighth or ninth bullet point down. We've already made that commitment, so we'll put that in. That will definitely be in our restrictive covenants whenever we get ready to record those.
While you're up here, Matt, it appears to me that townhomes outnumber residential lots two to one. I don't ever remember us coming close to approving something, a development like this. It being so close to Murfreesboro probably is maybe more conducive of this type of a development, but it gives me tremendous heartburn to see that number of townhomes versus residential lots. And no matter what you put in the HOA, townhomes are going to outnumber the residential lots, and they can change those HOA bylaws just by a simple vote, especially if there are investors that own those kind of things. Still causes me, causes me heartburn. Make sure that the HOA bylaws require a two-thirds majority vote to change those bylaws.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
You know, I'm going right to topics of what I said on the traffic. I'm sitting here listening to county residents, very good testimony. They're going to continue to live there. They're going to be close by. I'm going to move that we approve it based on staff comments and the, what's been presented tonight.
Motion made. Commissioner Thompson. Our second, Commissioner Kush. Further discussion? Please call the row.
Chairman Everwater? Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Lee Bogle? Charlotte P.? Trey Gooch?
Yes.
David Jones? Jem Thompson? And Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion has carried on Item One. Item Two. Kevin Radak of Farm Credit Mid-America, REZ 23022, Location 206 Murfreesboro Street. Commissioner District is Robert P. Jr., site of the size of the site is approximately two acres. Tax map 104, Parcel 14101. Existing zoning is residential medium density, RM. Proposed zoning is office professional. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. As you stated, the applicant is proposing to zone a portion of this property. It's actually the southern portion, about roughly two acres, to office professional to potentially relocate the existing farm credit office in Murfreesboro. Now, while the property on the map, as you can see, is shown as one tract, there was a subdivision plat recorded back in 2005 that actually splits it into two separate parcels. I actually included a copy of that plat in your agenda packet, so you can take a look at that. The properties look to be combined for tax purposes, so the property line, even though it's not showing on there, it's actually there. It's just those under the same ownership, so they're just getting one tax bill for it. So again, they're only looking to rezone the southern portion of that, which is about two acres. Concept plan has been submitted and has been also included with your agenda packets, which you can find on your iPads. As you know, concept plans aren't binding. This isn't like a plan development like the application we just looked at, but it gives you an idea of how they're looking to develop the property. According to information provided by the applicant, the office that they are proposing will be low-traffic, low-impact, commercial office building, and it's a one-story building about seventy-three hundred square feet in size. Access to the property will be along Murfreesboro Street. You can see on the concept plan that there's a little bit of separation between where the access drive is on Murfreesboro Street and John Bragg Highway. That's because there are separation requirements between T-Dot controlled right-of-way. So he's placed that about as far north as he can while still maintaining our required setbacks of about seven and a half feet. Of course, if this is approved, an engineered site plan will be required prior to the development of the site. This would have to show compliance with our regulations, but they also will have to comply with any T-Dot regulations regarding the location of John Bragg Highway. Type-one buffer is required between office professional zoned property and residentially zoned, so screening and buffering will be required along the north, east, and west sides. Buffering will not be required along the right-of-way frontages of either Murfreesboro Street or John Bragg Highway. Of course, an engineered site plan will include a landscape element as well, so you'll be able to and will be able to make sure that our landscape and buffering ordinances have been adhered to, and our performance standards would also apply to this situation. Office professional does act as a transition zone from residentially zoned property to more intense zoning classifications such as either commercial, general, or light industrial. The range of uses in this district is also more limited than it is in either the commercial or the industrial zones. For those reasons, we do feel that this is consistent with the recommendations of our county's comprehensive plan. We do recommend approval of this application. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know when we talked with the applicant about this originally, and I've had some conversations with a resident in the area about some of the drainage and flooding concerns on the property. I'll let Mike discuss that briefly before opening the public hearing.
Thank you, Douglas. What I have on the screen is the May 2010 flood imagery, and you can see a lot of water standing at, on this property and the adjacent properties. So we did have a long discussion with the design team and told them that this was an area of concern for us, that they would have to address this moving forward with the site plan. And typically, what we would ask for is that they evaluate the water elevation for a severe storm such as this, and then also make improvements. So the adjacent properties are not impacted along with the property being developed. So we told them that it's going to be a challenge with the intensive plan that they have for a pretty large building and this parking area, and it also, that it will be on a septic system. So if you're making some large stormwater improvements in this area, you know, where is your septic field going to be? And is it going to be sized sufficiently to support customers and employees that will work in this building? So that's something that we talked about. Like I said, we haven't seen a full-blown site design, but we did go over some issues with drainage. We talked with T-Dot about access. John Bragg Highway is a controlled access right-of-way until you get to this point, and then Murfreesboro Street back is just a regular county local road. So that's, and they moved the entrances far back away from this intersection, even though it is a really wide right-of-way here, they did move it back as far as they could. I'll go back to this aerial imagery, and you can kind of see. There's a house next door. It's hidden in the trees, but it's right here. I can think I've got a building layer. Right, right there. So that's, going back to drainage, that's one of the things that we told them that we'll be hyper-aware of, and we'll be making sure that this plan does not impact this property or any other adjacent property. And I can try to answer any questions if you have any.
Commissioners, questions for staff? Mister, could you use your mic?
So it's going to be, you can kind of see this elbow right here is a reference point. Let's go back to the site plan. So there's that elbow, same elbow here, so it's pretty much directly in this area. And it appears, I'm sorry, I'm going to jump back and forth. So it looks like the water is up around 642 elevation in this heavy rainfall event we had from May 2010. And I'll go back to the site plan, and you can kind of see that's, they're showing that 65048. I don't know if that's the same datum, because I don't believe I have a 650. I was going to compare apples to apples, but it doesn't look like it's the same. We might have to verify their datum that they're using. But essentially, with that elbow, you could see the building will sit essentially where the existing house is sitting, and then you'll have parking around it. So they'll have to make all of their stormwater improvements on this property and have room for a septic system. So it's going to be a tight squeeze. Here is a copy of the plat that Doug was talking about. They do show existing soils in this area, but if you go back and look at the site plan, that's going to be pretty much disturbed with the parking lot. So that's something that we'll have to make sure they've got taken care of.
Sounds like to me what we're asking to do is approve the track, but we're a long way from being able to do anything with this.
Yes, sir.
They're trying to make a decision if they want to buy this piece of property.
Yes, sir.
If they don't get rezoned, they can't move any farther with it.
Yes, sir. And we've had long discussions about the challenges that this property has, and they think they can solve them all with the site plan, but we have not seen the full-blown site plan.
Thank you, Chair. Michael, the old plat. And I don't know if this is condemned and no longer there, but I show a middle Tennessee electric power line going right through the middle of the property.
Yes, that's about where the property line, if I can zoom, let me zoom in.
Is that, is that underground? Is that aerial?
That is, I believe, a middle Tennessee electric power line. Is this one you're talking about, right here? Yes. That is, this is the proposed, well, actually, it is the property line, isn't it, Douglas? Yeah, this is the property line of this parcel, too. So it kind of straddles, almost straddles that, parallels, I should say, or cuts diagonal to it, yeah.
But that, so that stays, right?
Yes, I would say... Yes, I would say, or it needs to be relocated, if I can jump back to there.
Good luck on that. So, that's approximately at the end of the building.
Yeah, they're showing it right here.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. And middle Tennessee electric clears that easement most often.
Okay, so it's not in play?
No, sir, no, sir.
Other questions? If not, I'll ask if the applicant would like to come forward, or a representative.
Mike, while we're waiting, would you go back to the flood, the May 10 deal, and show me approximately where that water or electric line would be?
It is, sorry, kind of right in this area, right here.
So, the entire yellow outline is the property in question?
That's both parcels, yeah. The southern parcel, for some reason, I don't have a parcel line in between, so it's picking both of them.
That is actually tracks one and two together. If they're under common ownership, a lot of the times, the owner will have them combined for tax purposes, so they'll only get in the one bills opposed to two. But when you look at the, when you look at the plat, there was a plat, I think it was 2005, that's when it was recorded. It has not been platted to recombine them, so that property line still is there, it's just not shown on the tax maps for tax purposes.
So, we're only talking about Lot 2?
The southern lot, correct.
So, he, to find better soils or to move the building around, he cannot encroach on Property 1?
Correct, because there's actually that property line, Mike, showing right there on the screen.
That they do not own.
That's correct. Lot 1 would not be part of what they're asking for, they're only asking for Lot 2.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Let us have your name.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Todd Lanning. I'm with the, my address is 1608 Russell Avenue, Louisville, Kentucky, and I'm representing Farm Credit Mid-America. And I just want to express my, that I'm in favor of the project, and I know there's some questions about it. And as far as the, you know, the issue with the flooding, that could be an issue, we were planning to do some improvements to make sure that the, you know, the building is set up above the floodplain as well, and to actually carve out on that second parcel, the tract 1, to kind of hollow that out, to make sure that, you know, floodwater that could back out of the sinkhole potentially would be accommodated into those areas. We, as far as, yes, we have not actually purchased the property as of yet, but they are working on doing that right now. Questions you have of me, I guess I can pretty much.
Questions for the applicant? Having been down this road myself, first thing I'd ask you is how many people you're planning on putting on this site to work? And then, as far as soils, I heard that, before I bought a piece of property, I think I know about soils matching up with how many people I got there, and if you hadn't got that figured out, I think we're a little premature on this thing.
You're talking about the soils and what kind of they are?
Well, for a septic system, I think I just heard you going to be on a septic system, and if we don't know, if you don't, I don't care, but if you don't know how much.
Yeah, we actually did get an environmental assessment, Phase 1, so we do actually know what the soils are. But we haven't actually gone to the step yet of actually designing the lateral field. We'll have someone, you know, subcontractor and another, I guess, consultant do that for us.
The soils that's been located will satisfy your needs for this building?
I'm sorry, could you say it?
The soils that you've located, your soil scientist has found will take care of your projected building?
We do think they are, yes, yes. Even though, you know, they are shallow soils, but we would actually probably bring in some additional soil to build it up a little bit so that we're out of the floodplain and make sure everything drains well.
How many employees will be in the building that you?
I think there will be about five or six, you know, something like that. It's a low amount of people in there. I think there's about typically five or six offices per building, and then I'm thinking it's probably about one or two, you know, customers per hour that would actually come into the building.
Typical Farm Credit office building.
I guess you're all familiar with the existing one that's in downtown Murfreesboro.
That was my question.
I've never actually been there.
Commissioner P.
That was my question. Is this a new office, or will it be moving off South Church Street or Church Street?
Yes, this will be a new office. They will be relocating to this new office from the, yeah, from the existing street.
Commissioner?
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding completely. Confirm what I think I heard you say is that the landowner is open to the sale of additional square footage or whatever you might need on the adjacent lot to suit the requirements for detention pond, septic soils, and anything else to make this happen, right?
Yes, they are planning to buy both tracks, is what I've heard.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm not 100% sure.
Farm Credit will be buying both tracks?
Now, I do have Amanda Edens is in attendance, and maybe she could answer that. Amanda, could you? Amanda's with Farm Credit. She's, I think she's project manager.
12501 Lakefront Place, Louisville, Kentucky. I'm the project manager for Farm Credit. How is this?
You can pull that down. Yeah, there you go.
I know, sorry, short people. We will be purchasing both tracks with the idea that we are just rezoning the first with the ability to extend over into the second if needed. There on employee count, we'll have about 15 employees that are, have spaces in our building, but generally, five to six will be there on a daily.
Thank you, Chair. Doug, does that, in light of that information, does that change the zoning request a little bit?
Well, that's the first I've heard of this. Their request was for the southern portion. Depending on what they're doing with that northern track, if it's just going to be for drainage, they may not even have to, they could do like a consent to drain on themselves or something like that. I don't think they would necessarily have to rezone the northern track for that. Now, if they start playing around with the footprint of the building and it starts encroaching on that side, then yeah, that northern portion or whatever portion they're going to utilize at that point should be zoned consistent with this. But for tonight, their request is only for that southern tract, so there may have, you may see another application for this at some point if they move forward like they're discussing.
We're just planning to do all the, you know, all the new development on the track, track 2, so we're not, there will be no parking, no detention basin or lateral field on the adjacent property, just to be clear.
If I can, if I can ask kind of a challenging question, don't take this personal. You're not from around here. It appears, it appears that the engineering firm is not from around here. Our local engineering firms has worked with us really, really diligently to deal with water issues, especially as they affect neighbors and surrounding areas. We work real hard with this planning commission and neighborhoods to improve water drainage. I'll be the first to tell you that unless your plan improves water drainage in some of the surrounding lots, you're going to get a no from this commissioner. I would much prefer you be dealing with some local engineers that know our territory than somebody that we don't know anything about. It's an observation that I have with my 30 years of experience on this planning commission, okay? We know these guys, we trust these guys. I don't know you, I don't know your engineering firm, and this is a challenging piece of property, and I want to see if it's approved, if the rezoning is approved, I want to see a plan that's not only going to take care of the existing property, but the properties that touch this piece of property. Am I making myself clear?
I hate to go back to it, but I'm just telling you, I think what Commissioner just said, you got a whole lot more questions to get answered, in my opinion, than you're prepared to answer tonight. Getting this thing rezoned is just, looks like to me, I'd have more homework done before I'd come up here to ask for it to be rezoned. That'd be my personal opinion. So, somehow or another, I'm going to have a harder time supporting it, because I don't think you know what you're buying. I don't know what, I don't think you realize what you're getting hoped of without having the right engineering guy to come out there and tell you, one, about your soils, two, about your floodwaters, what you're going to do with it. I personally wouldn't buy a piece of property in the situation you're in right now. Ready to open it up for comments? All right, we'll now open up for our public comments. Now open, anyone like to come forward and make comment, either for or against? Just general comments. We ask you to do so, we'll give you three minutes to do so. This is in the Commissioner's district, so he's coming forward this time. Mr. P. I had an old friend named Carter Woodruff that used to work for these folks, and I've been in their building out on Church Street quite a few times over the years. One thing that I look for in my commission district is a low impact to our community, and I don't want to see a lot of houses thrown in there if I don't have to have them. Now, when this was brought to my attention, and I forget whether I was talking to Doug or who I was talking to, first thing I told him, I said, "I don't really have a problem with Farm Credit, because that, to me, is going to be low impact to our community." But where they were putting it, I was worried about the water. Guess what? Everybody knows about that water over there. So, you know, that's a big thing to me, and something they, being out of town, may not know, is the state of Tennessee takes care of that main roadway there on John Bragg. And as much as I like them, and I do get along with them, but they're a lot more difficult to work with, especially on drainage issues along John Bragg. Since John Bragg's went in, I've got drainage issues from one end of it to the other, and that's part of it, and that's something I'll just give you a heads-up on. You may have some problems with your drainage there, and part of that's due to working with the state and how you're going to work around that John Bragg, because it's basically a large dike. And it's not just there, it goes all the way out to Kitterell, almost to Ridgeway, where you run into that problems. But again, having said that, I think if I was going to put a business in a residential area, this would be the one that I would want next to me, because y'all are low-impact, you don't have a lot of people running in there squealing tires, raising cane, I mean, people are coming in there, talk to you about making a loan on their farm or farm machinery or whatever. You're a good company, good people. I would suggest, you know, if you can get this done, and I have not had the first call from any of the residents over there, one way or the other. You know, I've talked briefly to some of the staff members, and I actually forget which one I talked to, but also, one of y'all's representatives, and as far as I'm concerned, you know, I'm positive on it if you can overcome your problems with your drainage. And that's the main thing that I see, because that water, I don't know how well you've looked at those pictures around there, but you need to back up and zoom out, and you'll find that there's a lot more water than that one puddle there that y'all are seeing. But having said all that, again, I think they'd be good neighbors, but I do have a question. If they're wanting to buy this contingent upon the zoning, is it possible for this zoning to be contingent upon them buying it?
No, sir.
When I say that, you see what I'm saying, is I don't want to have it rezoned and then an autozone move into it.
Right, well, the quick answer to your question is, can we do that? No. Now, I will say this, that Office Professional has a limited zone as compared to the commercial zones, like the, what you're talking about, like an autozone or something like that. We would classify that as general retail trade. That's not even allowed in that district. So, the amount of and type of uses that you're going to see in the OP is a lot different than what you'd see in commercial.
For me to be in favor of it, it would have to be something equivalent, that type thing, you know, low density and not a lot of people running in and out, and there's not. You know, y'all run a good business, and it's quiet. So, anyway, I'm in favor of that type of business being in that neighborhood. But having said that, I don't have any other comments other than good luck working with the state on that drainage. Well, the records to show, too, you noticed I did not set the timer on Chairman P. tonight as he's up here speaking. I'll not do that. Any other comments? If not, comment periods. It's closed at this time, and Commissioners, it's up to you for your discussion. I would like to say, just like Chairman P. says right there, you've got to understand that Farm Credit is an important industry to the farmers of this county, and they've worked with us for years and years and years, and I guess I'd have to say, they helped me with a house one time that I had to have, as well as for a farm and some things of that type. So, we do know what Farm Credit is, and at one time was Federal Land Bank, if some of you have ever heard of that name. It goes that far back. So, this is what we're talking about here. So, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, that on John Bragg Highway is egress, and it's probably prime for this type of development. The piece of property I know is challenging. All of those details will have to be worked out in the future. With all that being said, I move to approve this rezoning request, if there is, and with all staff comments.
A motion to approve. I had a second. Commissioner Everwater, further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Jim Everwater, Jeff Phillips, Mike Kush, Lee Bogle, Charlotte P., Trey Gooch, David Jones, Jim Thompson, Pettis Reed, Motion carries.
Motion has carried. Item 3, Christopher 3, REZ 23-023, location 7729, Highway 99. Commissioner's district gate, Pettis Reed, which is me. Size of site is approximately 23.6 acres, approximately nine acres for rezoning. Tax map 138 parcel 3.01. Existing zoning is residential, medium density, and proposed zoning is commercial services. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. As you stated, the applicant would like to zone about nine acres of this tract to commercial services for a self-storage facility. This use is classified as general personal services in our zoning ordinance, and the applicant is aware that this is not a use that's allowed by right in the commercial services zone, it's only allowed by special exception. So, they are aware that if this is approved, they will have to make an application before the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, long story short, the approval of the zoning does not necessarily approve the use that he's proposing tonight. You will find a concept plan that has been submitted by the applicant in your agenda packet. Again, this is not binding, but you can see that it shows several buildings arranged what I would call more of a fortress-style layout. No office is being proposed, it would be accessed through a kiosk near the front of the property. And you also see that there's a couple of future building sites. Don't really have any idea what those are at this point, I don't think he does either, just for future planning purposes is what he's showing those for. Access to this property will be along Highway 99, as shown on this plan. During our pre-application meeting, we did inform the applicant that we were not comfortable with any kind of an access onto Thompson Road. It makes sense, really, for this particular tract, considering that's really toward the southern end of this tract, then Thompson Road is really more toward the northern end or eastern, northern, eastern end of this tract. So, the applicant did agree and has not proposed any access points. So, any new and improved access points along Highway 99 would have to be approved by the state. state, as this is a T-Dot controlled road. You'll see on the plan, and this is a little unusual, on that concept plan, you'll see an existing easement that runs through this property. That access easement actually provides access to several residential tracks, when you look at the overall map there Mike has up, and I'm sure he'll bring up an area, you'll kind of see the driveway that, that runs through there. The applicant obviously is aware of that, as he's shown it on his plan, but he's also aware that he needs to preserve that for access to the tracks to the back. Now, you can see the layout of those lots, pretty much all of them do have secondary access points back to Highway 99, so this is, doesn't appear to, at least best that I can tell, the only way in and out. But since this is a recorded easement, and it's on the deeds and everything, then yes, it does need to be preserved, so, and he is showing that on here. Obviously, if this is approved, and he were to go and get special exception approval for the use, for many warehouses, they would have to be in an engineered site plan for us to, to look at and consider, as well for planning commission approval. Landscaping would require a type-two buffer between commercially and a residentially zoned properties. You can see he does, on his concept plan, show buffering along all sides of his development, except for along the right-of-way. He's not looking, at this point, that I'm aware of, to actually subdivide this off of the subject property, but the remaining property be zoned residentially, so you can see he's providing a buffer to that. Wouldn't necessarily have to do that, since it's his property, but he is showing that on there. Again, if this is approved, concept plan, I'm sorry, engineered site plan would show the conformance with our landscaping regulations as well, and our performance standards also would apply. This property is located within the Rockvale Rural Center Character Area, and also along Highway 99, which is an urban-style corridor. There are other commercially zoned properties, CS-owned properties in close proximity to the site, about a third of the mile to the southwest. You'll recall, just within the last couple of months, the Planning Commission recently recommended denial for a rezoning application for Commercial General on a piece of property across the street, Highway 99, from this site. Now, that being said, Commercial General does allow for a larger range of uses than Commercial Services does. There was also some concerns that we had with the functionality of that smaller property, the size just really was too small, we thought, for what they were trying to accomplish on the property. So, this site obviously is a lot larger than what was being considered across the street, and the use also is, is different. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I believe the applicant is present, I think I saw him walking in here a little bit ago. So with that, again, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Missus?
Doug, this piece of property that's outlined there in yellow, I guess it's yellow, is a really large track, is, how will the rest of that piece of property be accessible in the future?
Well, it's all, it's got highway, right-of-way along Highway 99, and also Thompson Road, it's got quite a bit of frontage. Now, there's a lot of constraints with the rest of that property, Mike's gonna turn on the contours here, and you'll see what I'm talking about. The area that he's looking to develop is probably the flattest part of the site, the rest of it's got a pretty significant amount of topography on it, so trying to develop the rest of the property, I think, would be challenging. Also, there's, it doesn't appear to be just a lot of septic soil on this property, there used to be a house on here at some point, so there probably isn't enough soil for at least a small working septic system, but once you start getting to various other portions of the property, you're probably not gonna find that much. So, this really, the area that he's looking to develop probably is the, the most available
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Doug, will you go back and explain again, and I'm sorry for not comprehending the first time, this existing easement is a, it's a secondary easement, right? So it's not the primary use to-
It doesn't appear to be, it may have been at one time, but when you turn the aerial on, and Mike will, I know he will-
And it just goes to those two houses to the-
There's a few more back there, when he, when he zooms out, there's, there's a handful.
You have to, have to be patient, it's intensive aerial image.
So you can kind of see the road kind of running through there.
This is, yeah, right here, gravel drive.
There's one track, two tracks, it keeps going further.
Okay, so does this, does this mean, then, that these people, or this client, this developer, will have to put in two separate gates for these people to have access to get to that road at their will?
Well, I think the way that he designs his site, the way that the gate, he'll have to kind of design around that, where the gate's going to be, it wouldn't make a lot of sense to him to have a gate-
Oh, yeah, it's on the other side of the security-
You see what I'm saying, it's on the other, yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's on the other side of the security gate. Okay, I'm with you, thanks, Jim. Okay.
But of course, like I said, this is conceptual, that'll be borne out whenever he, if this is approved, of course, that'll be something he'll have to make sure that he's cognizant of, that he's preserving the easement, but also, he doesn't want to have to provide extra gates into, through his development, if he doesn't have to. It was actually in the mini warehouse part, right? Yeah.
Mr. Everwater?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike, as our engineer, am I reading this, I realize what I'm looking at is not a topo map, but it appears that there's about 70 feet of fall from the front of this site in the back, so that's like a mountaintop, a, a small mountaintop.
Yes.
I guess my concern is, do we have a potential, another rock mining operation here that we need to be concerned about? And we saw one of these a couple of years ago, I'm not sure where we stand on that one, but that's a lot of rock that's gotta be hauled out of there.
I could show you images of it still operating as a rock quarry, but I won't go into that. But yes, it, it, this site is gonna be very challenging, topographically. Hold on just a second, let's, let the contours generate.
I would love to know how many yards of material that is to come out of there, so we can calculate the number of dump trucks.
Well, at this point, I will say, while that's coming up, I will say, we have not had any discussions about, you know, 40-foot rock cliff walls or anything like that, so, yeah, I, the conversations we'd have with the applicant at this point have been pretty positive. I mean, he realizes that there's, you know, challenges with this site, and I think he wants to work with the topography the best, as best he can. Now, obviously, there's gonna have to be some grading, he knows that, but I'll let him speak more to that, but Mike, not to take your thunder or anything.
And you can, yeah, typically, these long skinny buildings are gonna be a challenge, because you will have to step essentially each unit up the hill, if you don't have a flat area. A lot of times, you try to keep the, the buildings parallel with the contours, not perpendicular, so you don't have that much relief from one side to the other. So there, yeah, it's gonna be a definite challenge, and we discussed it with him about this, but he thinks he can make it work. I can, I could take you to the other one you're talking about, but I don't know if I need to. I'm, I'm being told not to, yes, yes. Yeah, it's still a source that's subject to me, but. So this, yeah, this is the area that Doug is talking about, right, in this, this southern most, most part, portion of the site.
Other questions? If not, let's bring the applicant up. Give your name, address.
My name's David Stewart, I'm an architect principal with Orkut Winslow, address is 5016 Centennial Boulevard in Nashville. Here representing Mr. Threet, and unfortunately, he couldn't be here, but you had some good questions. Basically, the property is, you know, looking to put storage of, you know, individual mini storage units on the, the campus, the, as you talked about, the easement, you know, really, all the developments on the right side of that easement, as you're looking on the plan there, the gate would be on the right side of that easement as well, going into there. We're still working through, as far as like, the number of units, but, you know, basically, especially those ones that are on the slope, that kind of go along the slope, would probably be smaller units, so that you can accommodate some of that, that slope, the grade change there. But it's, yeah, it's total of 23 acres, this portion that we are looking at is closer to about nine acres, so it is a fairly small piece of the overall development. We've, we've kept 30-foot easements around the property, we just went ahead and kind of showed those, it's actually a little bit more than it is required on portions of it. Tried to make sure we kind of leave a buffer as much as we can to, to the neighboring properties. So, yeah, I think, you know, these buildings are all intended to just be one-story buildings, and so to try and kind of minimally impact this area. And, and he is also looking at actually building this in, in phases, so it probably, you know, he may not build it all, all of this at once, it may be a portion of it initially, to kind of get things going. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you intend to procure the services of a civil engineer to do this site plan, or do you plan to do that in-house?
Yeah, no, we, we'll procure that, we typically, yeah, we'll work with, there's a couple, he hasn't decided yet which one, but there's a, there's a couple ones that we work with that do work here locally.
Okay, 'cause I know there's some complexities here with-
There are.
It's not just a simple grading plan.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Missus? Can you answer about the easement, about how that's gonna be handled?
Yeah, so the easement, you know, the intent is to, to keep it there, it's, it's kind of a gravel road right now, and so, you know, the idea was to put a, basically a stop sign on, on either end of it, so that people that have kind of come, you know, across the property, you know, will, they'll stop along that area, but, you know, the intent is to kind of keep it there where it is located right now. That's why the whole, really, most of the development's on the right side of the easement, so it's not- We're showing right now just kind of some future development on the left side of the easement, and that could be like a small office, potentially, you know, for the- But, you know, so that's, that's kind of the intent right now.
One else?
Are you, gonna have an office there, or you're gonna just strictly be, check-in at the gate, online?
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, for anybody that actually, you know, has a unit there, they, they won't actually stop at the office, it's, it's a all-automated process.
Plan to build an office there, is-
It may at some point down the road, right now, they don't really have a need for it, that's why it's kind of shown as future, and, and just to try and show something on the, the left side of that easement line.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Not, thank you, sir. We'll now have our comment period, and anyone that wishes to express their comments, either for or against, they'll have three minutes to do so, and we'll ask that you come forward at this time. Name and address.
Alan Hood, can you hear me? Alan Hood, 7785 Highway 99. So, some of this stuff's already been covered, but I'm, I'm gonna go back over, so I want to thank you guys for the, giving me this opportunity today. So I stand before you as a concerned member of the community to express my objection to the proposed rezoning of the property at 7729 Highway 99. So first, the charm of our neighborhood lies in its peaceful and family-friendly environment. Rezoning the property to commercial services could lead to increased traffic, noise pollution, and a general disruption of the tranquility that we currently enjoy. Second, there's a shared easement for the owners of the seven other properties, with which a few of these property owners are landlocked. And this easement, which is essentially a driveway, is the only way for those families to access their homes and properties. By looking at Mr. Threet's plan for the storage facilities, and the future commercial buildings, the easement cuts right between the gate keypad and the access gate, per his renderings, therefore leading to the high probability of impeding the ingress and egress of the other property owners that are accessing the property. So how will this be resolved? Third, safety. Studies have shown that areas surrounding self-storage facilities are at a higher risk of experiencing various crimes, including theft, vandalism, and even illegal activities. Criminals often view these facilities as easy targets, taking advantage of the anonymity and lack of constant surveillance. By approving self-storage facilities, we could inadvertently be inviting crime into our neighborhoods. Also, with the easement cutting right through the heart of the proposed self-storage facility, this gives criminals, tenants and stores, and the storage, tenants of the storage facility, and the curious direct access to our homes and property via this easement, which runs directly within feet of my home, which puts my family, neighbors in potential harms way. So how, how will that be resolved? Fourth, the shift to commercial services may lead to the construction of large and personal structures that clash with the existing architectural aesthetics of our community. This could erode the character and charm that attracted many of us to the area in the first place. This proposed site is on solid sheets of rock, the rock is visible from the surface with large rock outcropping standing three, four, and even five feet, and sometimes higher, with an elevation that ranges from roughly 700 feet at the road to nearly 770 feet toward the rear of the property. This proposed site will take major excavation of the over nine acres that will almost certainly require blasting of the rock to make a suitable building location. With my property being in close proximity, what happens when I have foundation damage? Who is going to cover the cost? Or what about the constant noise pollution that will occur from this major construction project? Additionally, rezoning could have a detrimental impact on the property values, the introduction of commercial elements are often results in decreased property values for surrounding residences. Homeowners have invested not just financially, but emotionally in our community, and a decline in property values would be disheartening consequence. In conclusion, I respectfully urge the Plan to Commission to reconsider the rezoning proposal, let us prioritize the preservation of our residential character, and explore alternative avenues for economic development that are in harmony with the values and aspirations of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Name is Christopher Oden, address 7779 Highway 99. This property that is being proposed is directly beside me. So Alan Hood just spoke, he covered a lot of the points that I have the same concerns with, so I'll just go to my bulletin points. His main concern is the water runoff, I've got multiple pictures, I actually turned some in before the deadline, that y'all may have, if not, I turned it into the wrong email, sorry for that. But basically, the water that does come down from either downpour rains or multiple day rains, we have backs up and goes all the way through the multiple properties at the street at Highway 99, that literally floods into the street to where sheriffs have to come sit on the street and park. So if we're gonna put nine acres of storage units versus greenland that we already have, how are we gonna fix that? How are we gonna get the water runoff to do what it needs to do in the proper way without flooding my house? Because I have living space on this ground level, and it's been within literally four inches from flooding my basement, with what greenland we have now. So if we go to nine acres plus the future of what we're gonna build from the other side of his property, how are you gonna dissipate that much water? That's a main, main concern. The next one is the blasting that's gonna occur, because like Alan pointed out, that property is nothing but rock. You can just walk through it, and you've got, I'd say, like you said, 70 feet of elevation for just nothing but rock to build storage units, they would have to be stepped units, but nobody's gonna probably build like that, so they're gonna do a lot of blasting to get that property to go what it needs to be. Then the future of the potentials of what's going left of that property, how much more blasting is there gonna be, what damages are gonna occur to my property that's on the house that I own now that's 45 years old? I don't know that answer. And the other is- And the other is the, there are already six other storage units in Eagleville, Rockville. It's not that far from this property. So why another storage unit? I don't know if they're overbooked, if they're already sold out. So that's a question I don't know, but it's worth looking into. Then the last is the traffic on Highway 99 is getting worse and worse. As of a few months ago, my just-turned-17-year-old daughter was turning into our driveway and got plowed at 55 miles an hour because there's no turning lane. She got a concussion, she's still dealing with that. So to me, it's like, who's going to stop abruptly in the middle of the road just to turn into a storage unit? I understand it's not everyday traffic. People are going to be moving their stuff in. But reality is, both my kids have been getting off the bus, and the bus has passed and almost killed both my kids. The second time I got to see it, my daughter threw my son out of the street to keep him from getting ran over. Now you're going to add another stop right here on that busy street, so there's going to be a turning lane added to keep somebody from getting harmed. Think that's the gist of my points versus what Alan already pointed out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Kevin Schwartz, 1425 Bradbury Drive in Murfreesboro. I own property that touches this on the Thompson roadside, but that access is like the hill that they have there on Thompson. It's not necessarily, you can drive it. You might be able to walk it if you have good knees. My property doesn't have any other access except for the strip that I own out to Thompson. And there are several others there that, that don't have any other access, even though the majority of them do have an access that runs to Highway 99, just because of the way they sold that property. I don't have any problem with them doing something, but I have a problem with the easement because that property has had trash on it. It's had, somebody threw a toilet out there, people stop and dump things on there, and it really hasn't been taken very, very good care of. The commercial part, I guess if we're going to zone that commercial, I'd like to have the rest of mine zoned commercial too, so we can just have a commercial area right there off of Thompson and Highway 99. I think it's probably a good proposal because it'd probably be good for my property value if it doesn't diminish it. The easement, having a stop sign, I don't really understand how that works. The stop sign, I guess, is for the people who own the, the units? Is that, they're, they're stopping coming across the easement because the easement is a, is a thoroughfare through there? So that, that was my question. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone. I'm closing the comment period. Commissioners?
Doug, my, the easement that I see up there, is this piece of property the first piece of property that is accessed by that easement? Why don't they close it down and run it to the side there?
Well, the easement, as you can see, runs off of Highway 99, right there. And it starts, so I guess you could say it starts at Highway 99, runs through this, the applicant's, well, the owner of the property applicants looking to possibly rezone and purchase, and extends quite a, quite a ways down there. Now, that easement, now, I'm going to say, as I haven't researched each and all these deeds up and down through here, so I can't say this for certain, but I would imagine, you know, hopefully, that, that private drive, that there is verbiage in everybody's deeds that states that they have access to that. I don't think it'd be as simple as just relocating it. Now, would it be possible for him to possibly do something different on his property while maintaining access, you know, obviously to the, the rest of those owners if he shifted it around? I mean, I guess that's, that's a possibility. That's something we probably want to talk with our legal staff about. I'm not going to opine on a, you know, the legality, but he can't just block it off. If he, if he did that, then he'd be denying access to some of those folks in the back. And while it does look like most of them have what appeared to be other ways in and out, just looking at the aerial, the, the further back you go, it looks like there are some that do rely on this exclusively, so.
I guess my question, I'm probably not real clear, but that piece of property that I'm looking at, and I don't know whether it's north, south, east, or west, but on my map, the lower piece of that property, they closed that easement from New Salem Highway to the lower part of that property and opened up the easement on the lower part of that property. It would eliminate all of those issues with that easement. Is it a possibility?
I think it's something we could, they could, well, it's not really going to be archway. It'll be something the applicant could explore with the property owner. Again, I think my biggest concern would be making sure that it's not being eliminated. Nick, I don't know if you have any comment on that?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's tough to answer here without having, like Doug said, all the deeds that are attached to that easement. You know, with, within, within deeds and/or by separate recorded document, there's legal descriptions that will provide the description of the easement that gives access to the roadway. And if I understand Commissioner Phillips' question, it's to just cut off that, that short little bit. But I would be hesitant to make that as a requirement of this, Commissioner, based on the other private interests involved that we know nothing about.
I was going to say, I have been all the way down that easement, all the way back in the back, and it covers a lot of different properties. That went through an auction several years ago, and that was in, that was in a lot of different, that's in a lot of different deeds.
Once again, I'm not saying eliminate it. I'm just saying move it to the, to the bottom piece of that piece of property and eliminate that whole issue with the easement going through it.
Yeah, you might want to hear from the applicant on that as well because the portion, Doug, I was asking for a little part of the meeting, but we've got a piece of the easement that comes off 99 and goes through a different parcel that adjoins the one here that we're talking about? Or, is that right or wrong?
Well, Mike, can you bring back up the aerial? Yeah. The easement that they're talking about is this road, little tract right, well, that cuts through the tract right here.
Right.
What she's zooming in on. Now, the portion, of course, that he's looking to do is only the southern nine acres. So that road, it's, it's that portion of it right there is what he's talking, that part that would cut through the, the commercial portion. I think, and if I understand what, what Jeff is saying, he's saying kind of relocate that portion from Highway 99 to where the, to where the, the access road would be for the mini warehouse and just incorporate it.
Bottom yellow line, the bottom yellow line, the very bottom.
Right there.
Well, that, that's the property line. That bottom yellow line is actually the property line.
That's right. Can you move the easement down there?
Well, first off, Doug, do you have any, pull up your filing cabinet of the, the regulations and zoning, but is there a setback issue off the property line to have the private drive moved right on it? It'd probably have to have a little bit of setback. I don't, I don't know.
I mean, private easements can be right on property lines.
Okay.
I mean, driveways typically, we say two feet from, off the right-of-way line, but that's about it.
Yeah. Is it a possibility, Commissioner? I think it could be. It's, if, if that is a true part of this, then it'd probably be incumbent upon the applicant to look at the legal ability for him to do so to make sure that he's not infringing on anybody else's rights. But the whole idea here is to ensure road access. And so if you're doing that, and you're not otherwise needing to take easement from other property owners that aren't before you, then there may not be a problem with it.
Has there been a meeting with the landowners at all to discuss all these issues?
I believe the, and I'm going to just speak for what I know. When we met with the applicant, we did encourage him to talk to several of the neighbors. I do believe he has done that. Now, how many of these folks he may have talked to, I don't have an answer to that question. There was not any kind of a formal neighborhood meeting. There's not one required for this kind of an application, so, yeah.
Mister?
I'd like to jump in here just briefly, since I'm in the business about three miles down the road. So I'm going to abstain from voting on this. I'm, I feel compelled to, I need to talk a little bit about one of the presentations there. As far as one, is there a need with the other storage units in the area? The answer is yes. Nobody necessarily wants them in their backyard. I'm 100% at capacity. I'm looking to do some additional things down the road, but however, the answer is yes, on the need. Nobody, you know, my man's got kayaks or whatever in his garage, he can't get his car inside. Well, issue around this county is we got all these HOAs, and nobody wants boats, they don't want campers, they don't want whatevers, and you know, they got, need to put stuff somewhere. Will property values go down? No, proven fact. I can show you a piece of property across the road from where I'm at, brought more money than I've ever seen about two years ago. I'm not worried about property values going down on this. Matter of fact, this gentleman's property's probably going to go up. I fought crime 20 years ago on storages, and I'm going to keep preaching this every time I hear it. It's not anything any different than anywhere else. Matter of fact, I've got cameras on the lot. I work with local sheriff, state highway patrols, they'll call me wanting to get shots from my cameras. So very little crime. It's usually an accident out front that they're interested in seeing, but had someone taken a camper that didn't belong to them a couple of times, both of them been recovered. A lot of people think they can do that and get away with it. I know of a couple of more investors that have looked at this piece of property and walked away from it. I think the bigger question for me would be, I think Ms. Schwartz brought it up, in terms of if you rezoned this, the last two guys I talked to, they decided due to the cost of development, the lay of the land, they had to walk. And I think that's probably what's going to happen if they get started here in the unknown for the property owners in the area. They may want to know more about, they might would have loved to have a storage unit there if that's what they thought was going in, and then someone comes in and finds out, boy, I had no idea I got caught with that cost. And I'll, I'll give you an example for me personally. I got a steal on my piece of property, 1999, I believe, when I bought it. I had to raise the elevation because of water. I spent more on raising the pad than I did the property. In this case, they got a separate situation. Them to build storages there is only going to help my business because the rates are going to go so high that I'll be glad to have that competition next door. So with that, I'm going to abstain from the vote. I just want everybody to understand what I see from a professional standpoint. We need storages in this county. There's not enough of them. And this particular piece of property, I've talked to two investors I know that walked away from it when they put the pencil to it, so. I think maybe the neighbors would want to know if they don't do storages here, what does that open up of the unknowns for the neighborhood? If that's the case, I'm like, Ms. Schwartz might want a whole bunch of them to be commercial in there if that's be the case. They could have a little, a lot of them may want commercial at that point in time.
Commissioners?
Chairman, I guess my question, some of the concerns I heard was the rock and blasting, and obviously the water. Do any of the staff know what kind of rock is there as far as how much would they, how much blasting would need to be taken, would be done to?
Well, I mean, we can look at the soil types to give you an idea. My guess is it's going to be a lot of gladeville. Now, as far as what kind of blasting, how much, well, actually, no, that's mimosa rock and some gladeville rock, but anything with rock in it obviously is going to require some, some work. How much? It's difficult to say until we've got an actual site plan. We really have no way of knowing that. Of course, they could always whole ram it. You know, that's going to take a whole lot more time and make a, you know, a ton more noise, but I mean, that's always an option too. But it's difficult to say without an actual engineered plan to say, okay, this is the amount of grading and they're going to do and everything. It's just, it's hard to come up with that.
Mike, would you show where the other commercial properties are around?
There's the little medical clinic here, Office Professional, the institutional, I believe is the post office.
Post office, it is.
Yeah, and one of these, I believe, is a gas station.
I believe, that's right.
Yeah.
And some other assorted things.
Here's the property here that he's talking about.
I may have missed something. Piece of property is expandable, right? The footprint that they're building on is expandable, is, is...
Well, do you mean if they're asking for the entire tract? Is that what you're going for?
Yes.
I mean, you're correct, that they are not asking for the entire tract to be rezoned. They're only asking for about nine acres or so.
So what's showing right there is all that's being rezoned.
That's what's being proposed, yes, sir.
So, but in all probability, the rest of that piece of property could be rezoned in a similar manner at some point in time?
Well, possibly, but as we talked about earlier in the meeting, the site constraints may prevent that. It just depends on if there's any more available septic soil on the property, things like that. There's a lot of topography on this site, as we've discussed. This is probably the, of the whole property, this is probably the most developable portion is what he's looking at right now. I mean, could somebody ask for the remainder to be zoned? Yeah, I mean, they could. They could make another request, but it'd be interesting to see what they would get on it.
There are two smaller pieces of, of that property that is out of that easement.
Yes.
That private drive. And he's got some kind of note about maybe future office buildings or site. Those are included in the rezonings?
Yes. He said that they'd possibly have an office for the mini warehouse there on one of those sides. The other side could just be another, you know, some sort of commercial office building. Now, again, that's assuming that there's enough septic on that property for bathrooms and everything that they need. If they're, if they can't find it, I mean, the property may be zoned that, but they wouldn't be able to, to have a building there that required bathroom use and things like that.
So that footprint that we're looking at right now does not include anything on those two parcels in front there, correct?
Correct. Right now, he's just looking to leave those blank. Yeah, everything else is to the other side of that access easement. That, that's where the, the bulk, primarily his development is, is on that other side.
If he wanted to put something on those two pieces, those parcels, could he do it? Or would he have to come back to?
Well, if he, if he zones the, the part that he's talking about, could he do that? If it met the zoning, then yes. Now, he is going to have to submit a site plan, and chances are, that's going to have to come back here, but it's not going to be like a rezoning public hearing. So the area he's looking to rezone is actually, yeah, from the frontage of 99 back, that nine acres right through there is what he's looking at. So, and it does include that portion up front along Highway 99, both sides of that little easement.
But we really don't know what's going to happen with those two parcels.
Beyond, right, beyond what the applicant said about one possibly being an office for the mini warehouse development itself, beyond that, no, we don't. They'd be allowed to do whatever they were allowed to do in the zoning ordinance, provided they could meet TDEC regulations, zoning codes, building codes, et cetera.
Mister?
I'm all for meeting the need of the community, and it sounds like there is a real need there. And I'm not opposed to the development necessarily. If someone's willing to invest, especially in that level of a grading plan... If someone's willing to invest, especially in that level of a grading plan and some other, the elements that go along with that, the drainage. My concern though at this level, I know we're looking at rezoning the property. And in, in most cases, I would say that I would go, you know, this meets the, fits the bill. But my concern is how many, I, I just don't have a good feel as to how many parcels were impacting with that easement. And if there's a potential for that to develop out front, I want that easement cleared up. And I feel like that's fair to ask before, that's not something, the other elements, we wait till site plan. We say we're going to address those in site plan and I agree with that. This one, I feel like needs to be addressed now because I need to know more about how that's all going to function together with us being good planners and talking about the zoning and thinking of all the land users that it impacts. So I'm not opposed to this, but if I need to make a motion to, I'm not going to support it tonight at this level until I feel more comfortable about how many parcels are affected and how we're going to address that easement issue. That's just one I can't get past at this point. So if I need to, I can make a motion to deny.
Well, that, or you could defer.
Defer. I'd be willing to do that.
Let me just say, and let me just, let me just kind of preempt or, you know, follow up those comments with, with this. Kind of on the lines you were saying, if fundamentally you don't have an issue with the rezoning, but you do want some more research done on this easement, I think deferral would be the, the better route. If it's not really going to matter one way or the other, what's going on with the easement, if you just have fundamental issues with the rezoning itself, I think that needs to be discussed and then a denial would be more in order.
Okay.
But if, if fundamentally everybody's okay with what they're proposing, I just don't see the point in having them do the research, look, us looking through it, if you're just going to die in anyway.
Okay.
I guess that's my point.
I, I don't have a problem with them pursuing this project. If they find it feasible and cost effective for them to do that, that's, that's a decision they have to make and I don't have a problem with that, especially if there's a need in the county. I'm, I'm just really having a problem with the easement issue. So with that, I will make a motion to defer. With com, with, with addressing the easement issue specifically and finding a best way to move forward, especially with the plan of the two parcels adjacent to 99, I want to know how all that is proposed to interact together and how we can continue to have access for those landowners in, in a way that makes sense.
Okay, we had a motion to defer. You've heard the motion. Do I have a second? Have a second for the discussion on the motion.
I, I have a little bit of, of, of comment on this. I'm certainly not averse and I think many of us are along the same lines. We know that Highway 99 is going to be highly commercial, highly developed. It's one of the growingest parts of our county and it's coming. And I think we see the need for that. I think the issues with this are going to be the amount of rock and grading and the impact that will have in the area, in the roads and that sort of thing. And the future commercial zoning, commercial services zoning down front with no specificity to it. Yes, ES does have some restrictions to it, but it's, it's kind of an open book as long as they stay within those guidelines. And we really don't know that, what those items are going to be. I'm just wondering if a, a, a PUD type plan would be more suitable for this so we could actually see what kind of rock we're dealing with and maybe see a, a potential grading plan and some idea of the rock and narrow down their choices for the commercial activity out front. And I do think that there can be a, a much improved plan for the easement. Now, and I completely understand what our county attorney is saying. That really has to be worked out with the landowners. They may like it just the way it is, but I think that they could get a whole lot better driveway and interest, entrance with a difference, with some tweaks to this plan. So I'm kind of leaning, I'm, I'm not against the deferral, but if anybody else has any thoughts about this, I, I think the PUD would allow the applicant to put more time, to put some more thought into it instead of pressing him for the 30 days that a deferral requires.
We have a motion to defer and go the way, so it could be left up to the applicant then to make that decision among themselves, as well as meeting with the planning and department and engineering to see where we go from there.
I, I think then it, it would be up to, I, I think if I hear what you're saying, the applicant would have to stand up very soon and say, we want to withdraw this and, and have a, a further consideration of it, a future date is, is a different plan. Or we can go ahead and say, we're just going to defer it for 30 days. Is that it?
Well, you have the ability to defer it on your own. You don't have to have the applicant's permission to do that at this point. Your bylaws give you the ability. I believe it's 60. I don't have them right in front of me, but, so you have that ability to do that even if he doesn't want you to. Now, as far as the options, I mean, you know, that's something I think we'll just going to have to see what direction they want to go, have discussions with us. They may come back and say, you know what? We're just going to abandon this application, at which point they would give us a letter and we would just make note of it, put in the file, life moves on. You know, planned development may be an option, maybe even looking at a lesser zoning classification like Office Professional. Office Professional does allow mini warehouses by special exception like the commercial zones do. So that, that is an option. And it's also the, it's still not quite as specific maybe, Jim, as what you were talking about, but it does cut down the range of uses like we talked about on the Murphysboro Street application. So that might provide some more, a little more comfort for the, the folks in the area about what might, and the commission about what might be there. But these are conversations we can have with the applicant and, you know, with the, the landowner, what they're willing to do and everything, so, yes.
So a deferral would still be appropriate to allow them, even if they want to pursue a PUD instead of?
Right, because they can always, at that point, we'd basically be kind of starting over a whole new application because that's a whole different ballgame. A neighborhood meeting is required for applicant, I mean, there's, there's a whole different chapter in the ordinance. So this application would basically go away and they'd have a new one at that point.
Good. A motion and it has been second. For, follow the row.
Jim Everwater. Jeff Phillips. Mike Kush. Lee Bogel. Charlotte P. Trey Gooch.
Yes.
David Jones. Jim Thompson, I'm sorry, pass, and Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion has been deferred. We have a set period of time on?
If it's not, like I said, I believe the bylaws give us 60 days.
60 days.
So if he comes back before that, we'll make sure it gets on the agenda.
Okay. All right, we'll move now into number four. Amendment to the zoning ordinance, ORD 23003, public comment period for Board of Zoning Appeals. Planning staff is the applicant.
Yes, sir, thank you. As you're aware, the state legislature passed a bill during the last session requiring public comment period during all county board and commission meetings. We, the planning commission approved amendments to our bylaws back in August to include these procedures for a public comment period. The Board of Zoning Appeals, their rules and, rules of procedure, excuse me, are included within our zoning ordinance, so they have to be amended into them. So what we're proposing to do is to add a new section to Section 1405H by adding this language. The language I've included with your agenda packets, it's pretty much word for word the same. The only change I made was changing planning commission to board of zoning appeals. Since this is an ordinance amendment, it does require public hearing at the planning commission and also at the board of commissioners, so that's why it's being brought to you tonight. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, commissioners? Think we've all gone over this, we've seen this. We'll move now right into the public hearing. Now open, anybody who'd like to make a comment on this ordinance may come forward, either for or against. It's now open. I've seen anybody come forward, comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Commissioner Everwater. Second, Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Remember, all rezoning and zoning ordinances and amendments requested will be considered at the December 14, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting unless deferred or withdrawn by the planning commission or applicant. Old business, is there any old business?
No, sir, no old business.
Staff reports and other business?
Yes, sir, we do have a couple of items. One item on your agenda, one that we'll talk about afterward. First is for a site plan submittal and for a site plan approval, if you will, and consideration of the Rutherford County Waste Transfer Station. This is 23-202, 3029, excuse me, new construction of approximately 26,000, I think it's close to 30 actually, after you look at everything. 30,000 square feet and three buildings on about 288 acres, zone heavy industrial located along landfill road. The county is the applicant. There has been discussion, as you all have been made aware over the last several months, about the county building a solid waste transfer station as part of an overall strategy for solid waste management when the current landfill can no longer accept waste. We did consider regulations for transfer stations and amended some ordinance changes into the zoning back in August of this year. Planning and engineering staff in conjunction with the mayor's office, I believe Mayor Carr is here. Okay, I see him now, thank you. And also our solid waste director, Bishop Wagner, he's also here. Have had numerous discussions with the design engineer for this project and have agreed that the proposed design that you see before you tonight will fit the needs of Rutherford County. We did review these plans. We did have quite a few comments. A lot of, the, the plans themselves were actually in pretty good shape. We just had a lot of comments because it was a really big set of plans, quite frankly. Most of our comments have been addressed. I'd say the vast majority have been. I think there's a couple of things that are still outstanding, tweaks that need to be made to the plan, which is similar to most site plans we see, just some, some tweaks to, for, you know, operations and things like that. But from our standpoint, we think it's in good shape. I'll turn it over to Mike for any comments that he might have and for any questions, we'll be, both be available for that, as well as Mayor Carr and Mr. Wagner.
No, like Doug said, we thoroughly, thoroughly have reviewed the plans and, and find them in mostly good order, just some fine tuning that needs to happen.
Okay, sir, commissioners, have any further questions for staff? If not, we'll ask those that wish to speak on this, come forward this time. I believe Matt and we'll ask it, we'll ask the bishops and mayor also come forward this time.
Matt Taylor of SEC, be happy to answer any questions. I think Doug did a good job describing the project. I think most of you have probably been hearing this conversation ongoing for many years, so feels like a, a nice hurdle to get past here.
Commissioners, any, any questions for this, this group we've got up here? I mean, we ought to have something for them. Go right ahead, mayor.
I'd like to give the planning commission just a little brief history if I could. This, the site work, civil engineering work for this particular project was awarded originally for a company out of North Carolina. And unfortunately, they, on several occasions, didn't meet our deadlines. And so unfortunately for the county, we had to pull the contract. And I have to, I'm just, I want on the record to say that we reached out to SEC after we gave them due notice and SEC did an outstanding job, working literally overtime, putting all hands on deck because the county's in somewhat of a situation where we know the landfill is closing. Indeed, the mayor's office received recently word that the landfill may be closing even sooner than we expected. Just to give you an idea, the gate rate at Middle Point landfill is now 140, over $147 a ton. And so my time as mayor, it has risen by almost 50%. And if you want to know what forecasts the closure of something, look at the gate rate. And so while I'm not predicting, nor would I when Middle Point will close, this facility affords Rutherford County something that it hasn't had heretofore and that is some solid waste independence and the ability to control its destiny with regard to how it does and deals with its solid waste. And so I just want to compliment Matt and his staff, I mean, because they literally worked overtime to get us under this deadline so we could not have trash in the streets. So I'm not, I'm not exaggerating, I'm not using exaggerated hyperbole. I'm literally, we're under the gun. So thank you, Matt, for the work you've done. And quite honestly, Bishop Wagner for working with Matt on scoping the project. So anyway, if you have any questions, Bishop and I will be glad to answer them, but we prefer that you ask Matt Taylor the questions.
Thank you, Chair. Does the landfill road improvement included in this package?
Thank you for that very, that's an excellent question. The answer is no, that is a separate engineering solution. That has also been awarded, as a matter of fact, that is how we came to SEC's because they had won the RF, the RFP for the engineering design services and because they won the award for the RFP being best and lowest bidder on that project, we reached out to them as, as a result of that award and say, hey, can you do this? And then bump this up because you've, you're already a negotiated contract engineer for the county. So excellent question, Commissioner Kirsch. But they, they're, we are putting the final touches on that here very, very soon. So we'll begin on that very shortly.
Right, so that, that'll be finished by the end of the year?
I don't know if it'll be finished by the end of the year. I, I would expect the engineering services is going to take a little while, Matt, if you want to comment on that, even though we're a little bit of field. I'll be glad to let you comment on that.
So this, this particular project, what's in this set of plans is actually out to bid currently. It is scheduled to receive bids December 6th with anticipation of hopefully a notice to proceed to that contractor mid-January. We put a lot of effort and concentrated efforts to this plan. We're now starting to turn to the road on the design side as this was the more crucial part time-wise. And we would anticipate bidding the road job in probably in the first quarter of next year. I have not put a construction time schedule to that yet, Commissioner. We're evaluating a couple of options as far as how we improve that road, whether it's full depth reclamation or whether it's brand new pavement. And so we're, we've got a geotech firm inside of our scope that's going to help us determine if the road that's there is suitable and it just needs to be widened or if it needs to be completely rebuilt.
This may not be a question for Matt, but I see the site plan has buildings not in scope or scales not in scope. I assume those are on the heels of this being approved in, in the time?
Yeah, I can, so essentially, we, we needed to get the site work out in front and so the architects, the architecture design is really starting to ramp up now. And so we were just clearly identifying that our site contractor is not expected to build the building. They're going to get it to subgrade and then those will be in a separate bid package for the buildings themselves.
And to draw your attention, as Commissioner Kush will know, we had a firm in North Carolina that was going to do both the site work and the architectural work for the building. Well, the site work became a priority because of the timeline necessary to complete the project before the anticipated closing of Middle Point. So we asked SEC to do the site work and then we've asked Bart Klein of Klein and Associates to come in and do the architectural work. So they're doing the architectural work and it was, it was quite honestly, stay local, Commissioner Gooch, because SEC and Klein and Associates have worked together. And so we found that, quite honestly, that was the better solution all along anyway. So live and learn. But anyway, so there are four phases to this. There's the site work that we're currently under, hopefully for your approval. There's the architectural, structural work for the transfer station itself. There's the boring underneath the Stones River to get CUD water, excuse, CUD water and Murphysboro sewer. And then finally, there is the road work that you're referencing, that Mayor, Commissioner Kush is referencing.
Other questions, comments? Question?
So the, the, the site altogether is 288 acres roughly?
The property itself.
Property.
Yes, sir.
And so the three buildings, how many acres would that?
So our, our disturbed area is just under 19 acres. So that, that includes all the grading itself.
And so that would leave ample room, Mr. Mayor, if in the future we decide to have something like Waste Away?
Yes, sir.
That would be, that could be on site.
Yes, this, this site plan and this architectural was designed for expansion, for diversion, for potential diversion in the future, absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Kush?
Do we anticipate any issues with item number three? Do we anticipate any issues with item number three with the city, and that is to go under Stones River with the water and sewer?
No, sir, we have had a very, county staff has had multiple meetings with them. We've had a meeting as recently as a couple of weeks ago. We have made our application to them to be an outside-the-city utility customer. That's anticipated to be at Planning Commission, I think it's like December 7th, going off memory, and then council pretty shortly thereafter. City administration has ensured, and Murfreesboro Water Resources has ensured us neither of those is a problem. We've already started surveying on the water treatment plant's property, that's where we're going to connect that. So, all of those is moving very, very smoothly.
One else?
Mayor, maybe Bishop, I don't remember this detailed of a site plan going through Public Works or even approaching the commission. What's the next step if this is approved tonight?
With your blessing, it, I think the next step, it goes to full commission, does it not?
Well, now, if I may interject, for site plans, this is not a rezoning request, this is just a site plan, so this just, this ends here, as far as the site plan approval goes. So, this doesn't have to go any further than what we're doing here tonight.
So, the committee process has not seen this plan?
That's correct. Of course, they don't see any site plans that we look at either, so.
Yeah, but.
Danny, it wasn't a requirement, Commissioner?
I understand, I'm just, I'm just asking, I don't think Public Works has seen the detailed plan. I think they saw a concept plan.
Correct.
But they've not seen this detailed plan. And I'm just wondering where it goes from here? Doesn't go anyplace?
Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. No, it, this is like any other site plan, Mr. Phillips, that we've considered. It stops here. If it's approved here, it's, the site plan itself is approved now. Of course, they're going to have to do pre-construction meetings, everything along with that, that we have to do for any other, you know, construction site, that process, but this doesn't have to go through the commission process.
Understood. It would be a smart thing to do to present this plan to Public Works, that it's gone through the process and been approved, and this is what's been approved, just to communicate with Public Works. Does that make sense?
Yes, Chairman, that is absolutely my intention with this, full disclosure, they just finished up the plans, like we saw our last draft, so I wasn't ready to present them on Tuesday, but I will plan to bring them on our next meeting.
Excellent, thank you.
I totally agree with the chairman down there on seeing plans like this that come before us. You've done an excellent job, Matt, and your SEC group, because I hadn't seen anything like this since the atomic collider, I don't think, when they first threw that out here, but this is very well done, it's very impressive from what I've seen, and excellent job. And it just shows us, Mayor, what we can get locally in it. But further statements, commissioners? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We'll finish our job. Anything else, staff?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Well, I was making sure they didn't have any, so I was getting ready on y'all. All right, we have a motion here to approve it, I have a second. Have a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Anything else?
Yes, sir, just one other I'd like to bring to your attention. I sent out an email last week regarding our annual Planning Commission training requirements. As you're aware, we're required to have four hours of annual training per state code. So, we have been talking with Jason Laxson at Consolidated Utility District about doing a presentation, I think I put this in the email, about a real deep dive into step systems and other topics with CUD. Jason and I have had a couple of different conversations about this, and we're looking forward to that. Several of you have already responded back to me about your availability, we're looking at that first week of December. It looks like, from the responses I've gotten so far, it looks like December the 8th is a Friday, but it looks like that's going to be, that's the only day so far that nobody has said that there was some sort of a conflict. So, I think we're going to shoot for that, and I was thinking probably in the morning, starting at 8:30 and going to about 12:30, and that'll give us the four hours that we need. I don't know if Jason's going to have four hours of material, so we may, you've, I've asked for some additional ideas, and you all have started giving me some, so we're going to kind of hash some of those out. Something that I did want to discuss tonight is location. I did check with the mayor's office, this room is available. Jason has also graciously offered CUD's conference training area at their building on Salem Highway, New Salem Highway, if we were interested in that. So, I'm fine either way, but I wanted to at least have a little bit of discussion on that, and see what you would prefer.
Make sure we don't get a ticket.
If we're here. What do you think?
Okay. Jason, you're still CUD there, they seem, okay, very good, yeah?
Along that line, if we're going to CUD, just a couple of things. Pettus only talked about fire protection, and I sent that to Doug, I'd really like for us to hit on that as far as planning long-term, if we're going to be able to service the county over the next 10 years, like was committed earlier. One of the other things I'd like to know, and it doesn't have as much to do with what we're doing here tonight, but while we're at CUD, I got to understand from the utility side, why in the world we're putting a 12-inch water line under the right-hand lane on Windrow Road, it's several hundred feet that's going in, maybe CUD can enlighten us that. I'd like for that to be a topic, because that road will never be right, and they're burying it about eight feet, 10 feet deep, so that's a real issue for me.
Okay, well, and Jason's here, and he's heard that, so I'm sure he'll, yeah, but any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll get some, you know, we'll formalize some information for you, and we'll let you know.
And we'll be at CUD.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate the invitation. All right, anything else?
Just final statements, we will not meet prior to Thanksgiving holiday, so just hope everybody has a happy, safe Thanksgiving. We appreciate all of you here, I know as staff, we really enjoy working with the Planning Commission, with the mayor's office, with Bishop, especially on some of these other projects that we work on, but just want to say thank you all for everything that you do.
We have another something there. Commissioner, did you have something?
Well, I saw Commissioner Thompson's list of ideas that he wanted to talk about during an email, and just wanted to remind him that the meeting, the training is four hours, not four days. Can we make that clear, Mr. Chairman?
All right, all right, nothing else? We've got the announcement, the fact that we're going to CUD for that meeting, and we do not meet again until December the 11th. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned.